Evening, everybody. Again, we are back and you know what time it is. It is budget season and we have before us the assistant city manager tonight, Nick McGregor, and we're going to be covering Public Works and.
The CIP list.
And the CIP list.
Yep.
Alright, well, let's just turn you loose.
Good evening.
Do you have a handout or? No, okay.
Am I supposed to?
No, no.
At your, at your spots, you should have had.
Yeah, you should have these.
He's special, dude.
I know.
He is special.
Everybody else had a handout. I don't know what graphics.
I was gonna say, everybody else had a handout, but I guess.
That's alright, Nick.
You want the power? I can give it to you later.
No, no, that's fine.
Sorry.
Leave him alone. Don't bother him.
Your rating system, you've already lost two points.
You said an hour.
Is there an evaluation that's getting handed out after which one, after all these, see who's the best?
I think everybody just turned their TVs off, but please, let's continue.
Get into some, some budget conversation.
You've already used two minutes.
I know. So, uh, tonight I will be discussing about the Public Works. First, the operating budget, and then I'll get into the CIP list. Just to give you an idea of what the Public Works Department looks like, I put the organizational chart on there. It's kind of messy, just because there's a lot of staff positions. This is the full-blown one with all the staff people listed. There is, uh, five different operation, operating divisions. Uh, the Burlington Urban Service or Transit, uh, Streets and Sewers, Vehicle Maintenance, Property Maintenance, and then Engineering. Uh, we have a total of forty-nine, uh, FTEs this year. We have, uh, we took away some of our temporary staffing that we had in the previous year budget. Uh, so that's, that explains the loss in the point, uh, or the one point two-five people. Uh, the revenue sources for Public Works is the pie chart up there. Uh, as you can see, a large majority of the, forty-six percent of, uh, uh, the funding source is road use tax, uh, followed by sewer fees. And then, uh, property maintenance and vehicle maintenance are the, the proper, are the charges. They're an internal service fund. Um, and then we have some state federal grant for Transit, and then, uh, Engineering also does charges for service for, for the projects. The Public Works total budget is, uh, eight point one nine nine million dollars. As you can see, I have all the, uh, operating budgets up on the pie chart, uh, listed, and then we will, uh, we'll dive into what that looks like on a divisional breakdown. I put the, the operating budgets, within the five divisions that oversee those budgets. Uh, as you can see, Streets and Sewers oversees, uh, a pretty good share of that, uh, followed by property maintenance, and then, vehicle maintenance and Transit kind of fall behind. Uh, Public Works Administration is one of those right in order to put, uh, that essentially it's myself and my office coordinator. It's sixty percent general fund, forty percent road use tax. It was a four point four-one percent increase, or seventy-eight hundred dollars from last year. Uh, Engineering is a five-person staffed, uh, division within Public Works headed by the city engineer. Uh, their overall budget, uh, for this next year is just under five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's a three point two, or three point three-two, uh, percent increase. Uh, they are funded by charges for service, so, when we, when we do capital projects, we, we do seven percent for engineering design, and then seven percent for, uh, construction inspection on those projects, and those projects are then, uh, the, the money's then allotted back to Engineering, uh, to pay for that budget after the project is closed out. Uh, we backfill the, the engineering budget with sales tax money between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, there's things that, you know, like sick time, vacation time, that staff's time is not, uh, able to cover. Transit is one of the, is the division that I directly oversee myself. Uh, it has a, just over a million dollar budget. It's six point four-three percent increase from fiscal year nineteen. A large portion of that is the fuel, vehicle maintenance charges, and then the personnel costs as well. Fuel is being the largest. The revenue sources for Transit are, uh, composed of federal transit assistance or FTA funds, uh, state transit assistance, STA funds, and then there's property tax, uh, there's two different property tax forms. There's a specific ta- uh, transit levy out there, and then we also have, uh, fares to go back towards that, and then to a smaller extent, we have some advertising money that we, that we put back. It's a nominal amount compared to the, the million dollar budget. Uh, below, I have the, the breakdown of the FTA allocation, kind of gives you an idea of how, uh, the FTA funds are, are calculated and then given to us. Uh, as you can see, what I have up there is the small urban systems, which, uh, our system is considered. Uh, we, we get money, or percentages of the overall share of STA or FTA funds available. So, the, the total ridership and then the total revenue miles goes into a percentage formula, and then it spits out the amount that we're awarded, and then on the next page, uh, is the STA funds, and they use, essentially the same formula, it's just different monies that they're, they're using. Uh, we actually saw a pretty good, I think it's seventy thousand dollars increase in revenue from FTA and STA funds, uh, from previous years, which means, assuming we can keep costs within budget, uh, that we will hopefully reduce the amount of burden on property taxes. And we also hired a new transit, our advertising agency, uh, to, to put ads on there, and they've already been pretty proactive. As I came on, Houck Advertisement kind of was on its way out of putting ads on our buses. They didn't put a very good effort into it. Uh, we, we since in August had hired Midwest Truck and they're a, an Iowa commu- or company, and so I think they're gonna be a little bit more aggressive in going out and getting, uh, some more advertisements for us.
Hey, Nick, I ask you a quick question. That, and you probably covered this last year, and I don't remember the answer, so, have we, and would it be fiscally, uh, to our advantage to look at merging with, uh, re- re- SEI, SEI bus? Or it, it, it can't be done?
We've, we've had this conversation, I think, a couple of times.
Yeah.
I think the previous, the, the first iteration of that, I think it was about a fifty thousand dollar savings. Um, at that point, the union came and renegotiated, uh, the salaries, and I think it was a, it was a cut to full-time and part-time staff.
Okay.
Um, and that was the way that, uh,
They handled it.
We, we kept it.
Services better than we offer as well.
Correct. We also had a conversation, we also had a conversation last, last year, I think probably sometime in this, I know, it was two years ago, sometime in the summertime, we had a conversation about, uh, we, we over, we overanalyzed, we analyzed the budgets and talked about these types of things. I don't know that the management of this would save us a lot of money. You know, I've had that conversation with Mike, um, Norris before, and I don't know that they're interested in getting into that political divisiveness that was caused the last time around.
Okay.
I do see benefits of the two organizations working better together from a, a route perspective. You know, you have one agency that essentially is, you know, operates on the boundaries of city, city limits, and then one that operates within. I think sometimes we limit ourselves for the ability to, to make connections, but beyond that, I don't know from a management side, how much easier it would be, or how much money you would save. You know, I, I do Transit as a part of my job, so I don't know that we really, I really give my full potential to what, you know, to managing the organization.
That's where the question comes from.
I've always, I've talked to Jim about getting a, you know, at least a part-time transit manager of some sort to handle the, you know, there's a lot of paperwork processes that go into receiving the FTA funds, you know, and Stephanie helps a lot with all the HR and financial side of things, but there's a lot more that we, you know, we haven't analyzed routes in a long time. But part of what we did this summer was we hired Southeast Regional Planning to help do some analysis, to do some ridership, ridership surveys, to see what kind of routes we're providing and what, what kind of service that is, and if we need to, we need to look at any operational changes, you know. The one thing I've always thought was kind of bizarre is our, our hub is at the very eastern part of town, and then we go from there and we move westward. It would take a lot of capital cost to, to move a hub more towards the center of Burlington, but I've al- I, I've always wondered if it would work better, and, but that's just, there's no study behind it. There's no, I have no information beyond that.
Well, and for the record, for the record, I think you do a fine job at it, but I know it's kind of an inherited job that, you're doing in addition to your other, your other one, uh, because we don't have a person.
Can I ask what, what is their role? I, I'm not familiar with that service, so, the Southeast.
They, they provide transit service for four counties worth. Um, they, they actually go into Fort Madison and Keokuk and provide, I think, rider, rides in between, I think, a four-hour period of time within town, but a lot of their rides are throughout the county and even in Burlington to Iowa City to, you know, they make a lot of, uh, healthcare-type runs.
So, is their objective from, uh, to, to get people from community to community, or our objective is inter-community transportation?
Well, I think it's community, community, but I do know they do some inter-community as well, because they do some where it's, they'll, they'll be in Mount Pleasant from Mount Pleasant to Mount Pleasant.
But I don't, I wouldn't call it redundant service, but hey, let me say this, though, real, just real quick. I just want to throw this out there since we came up on the bus, because I, I think it's important that we stress this. Uh, our, our bus service, uh, to me is, is hi- high, of highest quality. Our bus drivers are second to none. You know, they go beyond the call of duty, and, um, to me, uh, when they, when they reached out and said, hey, we, you know, we want to keep this service, and they'd be willing to take a pay cut to keep it going, just to make, uh, the figures come together, um, I, I just, I applaud them, and I, yeah. Unless, unless I see a big, to me, unless there's something glaring in the big overlap.
I'm just asking.
I'm just, I'm just saying, when this came up, uh, a year ago?
Yeah.
Or was it two years ago?
So, we, again, Nick kind of talked a little bit about it. We, we originally talked back when fiscal, during fiscal thirteen, in that timeframe. Fiscal thirteen, our net cost to operate Transit was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They thought they could get that closer to two hundred thousand dollars. So, our net cost after, uh, the employees talked about, uh, a, a, they did take a pay cut. We have a position that essentially that was halftime there, that now is no longer there, and really the service, I think probably struggles not to have that transit manager in that, in that role, even at that halftime basis. But our net cost of operations went down to, uh, two hundred and six thousand by FY fifteen. Was down a hundred and eighty-six thousand in sixteen and seventeen, and, uh, was back to two, up to two fourteen last year. Um, it's budgeted higher now, but it very likely could end up still back down there. Um, and if you think about them having a proposal that would cut our costs down to about the two hundred thousand level, that's where we ended up anyway.
Yeah.
And so, two years ago, when you had another discussion with Mike about whether there's potential for savings, I think that you'd get better, uh, supervisory role positions done with, with a coordinated service, but you wouldn't save any money out of it, out of it, and you have some of the potential concerns over are you, you, you have lost control over service, and are you really getting the same product or not?
And, and I think there's a lot of things that went into play with the reason why they were having such high costs. For one, our fleet is relatively, is, is pretty old, and we're, we've started to replace some of them, but it's just.
Not even was it just that it was old. We weren't able to, mi- our, our mechanics weren't able to service them.
Well, they didn't service them.
Well, within, in-house.
They took, they took them out to, to Shot and Kirk and Deary, and, and it was, a lot of what we had was had a lot of electrical issues, and so we would take it out, we would take it wherever, and the issue was solved, but then it was, it came back, and it was a reoccurring problem, you know, for months, and I, I would tip my hat at our vehicle maintenance manager who solved a lot of those problems. You know, we had a lot of discussion early, you know, when he first got there, when I first got there, to make some investment, some pretty big fixes in buses, but they've taken care of a lot of the issues now, and, and I, I also think going back, fuel costs were huge back then, too. You know, you look back what the cost of fuel was back then, it was pretty significant. We've been pretty lucky recently, but, you know, you see the increase in the budget, and a lot of that increase is due to fuel.
And actually, maintenance has crept back up some, too.
And remind me again, didn't, didn't you make a statement at one point that we had bought some buses that weren't all that well-built during the?
The era buses?
Late two thousand, or early two thousand ten era?
Era buses. You had manufacturers that all of a sudden had to triple their production, and they mass-produced them, but they weren't the same quality.
And unfortunately, we have not, we've, we've grabbed a couple of them and got them replaced, but there's a lot of, and the, also the problem with having six buses within a two-year window of time is they're also gonna hit their end of life at the same time. And so, rather than replacing one or two at a time, now you're trying to replace six.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I, you know, stand by, I think you do a good job with it, and I, I know we provide a good service, it's just, that's something that's always gonna, should be at least on the table to look at, because there might come a time when joint management of it be worthwhile.
I don't think, I don't think you'll save money doing it.
Okay.
I think you may, you'll get a different type of service, and in some lo- in some ways, it'll be better, in some ways, you might be potentially worse.
Who's it over? Who's it under? Please continue, Nick.
I like the idea of creating a workers program, but if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yep. Thanks, Nick.
You ready?
Sorry to interrupt you.
You're right. That's what we do this for.
No, he's not.
Uh, property maintenance, uh, I put that up here just, this one's a very complex one to talk about, um, just because it, property maintenance oversees a lot of different operating budgets for the buildings, uh, but I put up there, property maintenance itself is an internal service fund, um, and it is a five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar budget, uh, but they also oversee Auditorium, the Port, Senior Center, Public Works Building, and the Depot, and those are all general fund, uh, buildings, and they oversee the operation of those. They also oversee the traffic signals and the public lighting, uh, so, any of the, the street or traffic, well, not any of the streetlights. There are specific streetlights, and then all of the traffic lights, uh, that property maintenance oversees and fixes, and that's road use tax. And then they also, um, work on the parking lots, so, it's kind of just a different variety of, of budgets that they oversee. Uh, vehicle maintenance is an internal service fund as well. Uh, they operate a little bit differently than, uh, property maintenance. They, they over, they work with all the departments, but all the, the, all of them flow through vehicle maintenance. All the purchasing of the, uh, the fuel initially comes through vehicle maintenance, and then all the parts as well. This, uh, budget is, is a slight increase, as it kind of mentioned, with, uh, Transit fuel costs. Uh, we, we increased the overall purchase in vehicle maintenance this year. But I would say that Ron's doing a heck of a good job in making sure the, the vehicles are doing a, are getting fixed right.
So, when did he start? Do you remember what year?
He started the same year I did, in the end of fiscal year, uh, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. Alright, thanks.
Yep. And so, you see, we had a high initial seventeen. I think, I, not all of it is attributed to that, because then you also build back, but we, we took care of a lot of issues upfront.
Good deal.
Uh, Streets and Sewers is the, is the large, is the largest, um, overall division that sees the most money go through Public Works. Um, they oversee, it's kind of small to read, but Street Maintenance, which is road use tax funds, Snow Removal, which is also road use tax funds, and then Sanitary Sewer Maintenance, uh, is a total of about three million dollars here, and they actually, we have a reduction from the previous fiscal year. Uh, the large part of that is the capital outlay. Um, we, we had quite a few more purchases in the previous fiscal year, uh, but personnel costs are relatively about the same as they were in the previous year. Actually, uh, we saw a decrease in Snow Removal, but all that really is, is we took a look at the, the Snow Removal budget, and for the last couple of years, we have, you know, we've only spent a small fraction of that, and rather than budgeting for all that and then not using it, we, we decided to cut the budget. Um, it's all road use tax funds, and it goes, you know, when it's not used, it returns to fund balance for road use tax.
Making it worth this year, though.
Yeah, um, I just signed payroll, and there was, uh, some time cards in there that had probably sixty hours of overtime, so, there was, uh, there was quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. We've been, we've been pretty busy. Stormwater is one of those things. I kind of decided to do this a little bit separately. I think in the future, it'll probably be something underneath the, under, underneath Chris, through the Streets and Sewers, um, but with the creation of the ordinance in July, uh, we created the new fund, uh, that was talked about in the ordinance. Um, this is the first year that we're actually talking about a budget for it. In there, we're projected about a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue for this year. Most of that money is actually going to pay back for sewer separation costs in the past. In the future, I would, I would think maybe we could fund some of the operations out of this budget, uh, but for now, this is, majority of the money's going back to pay, you know, the cost of what, you know, sewer separation is. Capital Improvement Plan. Talk about the vehicles and equipment first, and then I will jump into the construction projects.
Can you go back to your sheet on stormwater?
Sure.
For a second, I'm sorry. I gotta get over to, in my tab. I'm just trying to get you beyond an hour. Um, your seven twenty-three is, you, there's two different, I think we have two different bond issues, Stephanie, wasn't it, that we identified that, actually, a Cascade S, three of them, uh, three SRFs, um, s- state revolving fund loans. One was on the Cascade project, se- separation, a Hawkeye project, and then a Ma- the Maslow, the Locust. Uh, we're anticipating expenditures, uh, first payment being due this next year. Um, and that's really what this was designed for. The Stormwater Fund, all the revenues, we collected the Stormwater revenue before. It was in the sewer fund along with the sewer revenues. So, we're just collecting it in a different spot. The idea that we're making transfers back to the debts, or those debt service transfers are essentially going back to the sewer fund, and going towards the same debt payments that they already were. But Nick also has, if you look at the overall expenditure this first year, one point one million. He's got a couple of, uh, projects that he has on his capitalist that he'll be talking about that are the, the reason why it's higher than that, uh, this first year, and they're projects that are, I mean, just reflective of our stormwater system. We don't have a great breakdown between sewer and stormwater, uh, but the ones that we can identify and really allocate over to this, we'll start doing as time moves on. And you may end up with personnel over in here at some point in the future, depending on some of the mandates.
And I, I'll talk about it a little bit later, but depending on the way the, the renegotiation goes and, um, the future of our town, we're not currently an MS four community, uh, which has been a surprise to a lot of, you know, the EPA folks that we've talked about. MS four is a, is a qualification that essentially forces you to have a staffed, s- maybe even several staffed positions to do monitoring of your stormwater outflows, not only quantity but quality, and, uh, there's a lot of requirements that come with MS four. It's not necessarily a road that we want to head down, but if it comes at the price of a renegotiation that's more favorable, then I think we would head down there willing, well, we're gonna have to. It makes more, it makes more sense in the long run than doing the separation.
So, you're saying they would kick the can down the road if we're willing to put somebody on staff to monitor storm out, uh, stormwater?
And not so many were, I mean.
That, that's maybe, maybe one of the things that is part of this. We'll just have to see.
Alright, okay.
But, I mean, uh, we were storm, Sergeant Bluff was this MS four community, uh, most, most significant-sized communities that have a receiving stream, such as, that was the Mississippi, or the Missouri River. I'm kind of surprised, being on the Mississippi River, that we haven't been given that same designation. But it comes with, how do you make sure that you're keeping the, your, uh, you have an idea of where all your intakes are, that they're in appro- in proper order, that you don't have broken intakes, that you try to deal with your eye, inflow and infiltration appropriately, uh, so your manhole covers are all in decent shape, and that you're monitoring them. I mean, there's, there are good positive things that come out of it for us, for operating a system, but
Yeah.
it is a headache.
Well, and I'm assuming that those type, that type of personnel are not inexpensive?
Really, when we, we just allocated someone out of our ordinary, I mean, s- street sewer crew to, to just have that responsibility of maintaining the, the information. Once they put a program to, once we put a program together, it's, it's just a staff person to make sure that they are monitoring it.
So, we don't have to have some special biologist that'll have it?
Nope.
Testing water, okay.
We have that already.
Okay.
Where's Dom?
He's not here. He's stiffed you. He's heard your, he's heard your spiel.
See how it is.
They cut out on you, man, but don't worry. Rhonda showed up for you.
Rhonda's here, and the chiefs are here, so you're covered.
The two chiefs.
Alright, Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, the vehicles and equipment, um, at the very top of the list is the bus replacement. Uh, we have money budgeted for the next five years in hopes, uh, so what, what the bus replacement is really contingent upon is that, I don't know the acronym, but it's PTMS scoring list that the state keeps for our buses. Essentially, it's, it's age, um, and miles, and so, one of the problems that I think our system suffers from is the age and miles, is we don't put a lot of miles on, on a daily basis, like a C bus. You know, they put on seventy miles a day or more on just one trip back and forth. And so, because of that, we have not been ranking high enough on the PTMS. So, Jim has allowed us to budget some funds to replace, uh, some of the buses on, in a more timely basis. I don't have the detail on that. I, I have it over here.
The first year, the FY twenty bus at that hundred and five thousand, we've allocated enough out of local option sales tax that that bus purchase can occur whether you get funding or not. Uh, but the other ones do not have that backing them, and the only way I could really do that is to cut out a, a project. So, we already cut out a lot of projects. We may end up having this, as we do go through this exercise over the next couple of years, in order to get the bus replacements that need to occur, kicking a couple more of Eric's projects out of the funding list.
And not, didn't we leverage, uh, uh, last year, we leveraged some funds to get two buses, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, we had, uh, we had two that scored high enough on the PTMS scoring.
And we had gone about, we had gone at least six years without replacing a bus.
Correct.
So, we, we needed to get back on track with getting buses replaced and, and start working through, and part of the priority here is, if we're not, if we're buying a bus with our own funding, we want to get buses replaced that are not gonna score well, uh, in the foreseeable future for receiving state funds, and also, we're looking, we want to take a look at our maintenance records on the vehicles. Which one are, which ones are costing us the most, or the most problematic? Those are the ones that we want to identify for that funding.
What, um, assuming we didn't do that, when would be, when do you think the earliest would be that we could purchase a new bus using state funds?
Well, for fiscal year twenty, we've got money allotted for fiscal year twenty to buy one outright, a light-duty bus.
Right, but that's our money.
But beyond that, I mean, so, the PTMS way it works is it's.
When do you think it would score high enough to be able to qualify for funds? When would the earliest be?
There's, there's one bus that is close, but I, I've seen the PTMS scoring for this last year, and I don't, it boggles my mind how it works, to be honest, because there's some that don't score as high, but they still get replaced. I don't know how, how it works, but they're somehow, they're getting replaced in front of buses that, in my opinion, have a higher score. But I would, I would think we should have a chance this year to get one replaced.
And the, the problem that, that Nick has with answering a question like that, we can look and see where, where it fits on the, on the funding list this year, but different buses get submitted for reimbursement the following year, and you may not have moved very far up the list. So, it, it's kind of hard to track and know exactly when, forecast when you're gonna have that bus move up to a fundable position. I mean, you can hope, and, and you can know which ones are, are kind of likely, but you're not gonna be able to really do a great job on it. What I'll say is, if, out of, we have five buses on the CIP up there, and four of them were reliant on, uh, state funding to actually make happen, there's no way in five years we're getting four replaced with state funding.
And you're saying that we're replacing them no matter what, regardless?
Uh, no, we only have that first one set that way, and I think that it's pretty likely that the fiscal twenty-one, that by that point, we sh- that the bus that's highest on, on the list should be in a position to
I would hope so.
To, to be replaced, but I think that by the time you get out to that fiscal twenty-two, um, we're not getting buses replaced, and I, when we go back and look at the, the CIP next year and revisit this, we may be looking at having to reprioritize our funds. And that's, that's where, again, Eric's projects are the ones that suffer, because they're, we, we try to do the equipment replacements.
To give you an idea, I've, I've rearranged the replacement schedule on these buses for the three budget cycles that I've been here for, not only for this, but for also for the, the Transit, the TIP plan that you submit to the state, and every single year, it's just a rearrangement of the way that it, you know, the way they fit in. Not to return back to the conversation about C bus, that is the one area where I could see, uh, a, a schedule or a, some sort of an agreement where you could trade out buses that, you know, one operates in town today, but tomorrow it's out on the open road, getting more miles put on it. Because ultimately, that's the big factor that, you know, that helps get it to the end of its useful life in the, in the eyes of the DOT, and then is able up, is eligible for replacement.
I got a quick question for you. I know in, um, Chief Trexel's presentation in the past, he's talked about the idea of buying ambulances and, and working towards trying to get to a point where we're just, we're keep maintaining the box, but we're replacing the chassis in the truck. Is there some kind of program, or is that even applicable with regard to buses? Is there, is there something out there where we can try and keep the box, but then at a much lesser cost, just replace the truck?
I, but the problem is, is the chassis is the part that's
Well, that's huge.
And that's what I don't know, that's, that's, that's why I'm
Could you keep the box and buy a new chassis?
Is there something out there, is there, is there a, something out there that would?
I, I don't, I don't know.
If you look at what, there's a difference between the two now, I mean, now, when Chief Trexel's buying an ambulance, they're, they're already in a process where that chassis is being manufactured in one place, and it goes somewhere else to be fitted with a box. Um, and that's, that happens with a lot of NIX equipment, too.
And they're all considered custom builds with the buses.
But the buses are not that way. Not that there might not be someone who would redo that, but it's, that's not a standard open market thing that, that, that we see.
As I work through this, uh, the battery backup is, is the third year, I, I think I talked to, you know, let, talked to you last year about it. Uh, all of the Roosevelt corridor, if, if the power were to go out, the lights do not function. What this project does is the last phase of getting all of the, the intersections on battery backup that allow it to operate for four hours on full color, or eight hours in red flash. So if we were to have, you know, a massive power outage of some sort, they would be in operation, so. We don't actually have the other ones installed yet, we ran into some weather as we were trying to get, uh, get them installed, so. The, uh, this, this la- next year is the last year to get the Roosevelt corridor done. Uh, the utility tractor is also for property maintenance use. Um, as we ran into the snow removal for this year, uh, w- we continue to stack more and more snow removal on to the different crews that are doing it, and we also have, uh, the new riverfront, which is, which is good, but it also comes uh, with a little bit more work than previous. Uh, right now, uh, Ryan Gorley is taking care of that, but at some point, I would expect that it may be a shared responsibility of some sort, and, you know, we're down at the auditorium parking lot. Uh, in order to get, you know, the sidewalks done a little bit more rapidly, that's the, the reason for this utility tractor. Uh, engineering, uh, they, they suffer a little bit from not having their own specific funding source, like road use tax or sewer funds to, to replace their vehicles, uh, their, their vehicles are starting to see their age, they get a lot of hand me downs from, from other departments. So this would replace one of their vehicles where they ha- hold a lot of their testing and, uh, surveying equipment, um, have a full utility box. Um, and then streets and sewers, uh, I will say Chris is one of the best at, you know, scheduling out the replacement of his vehicles, uh, on, on a, on a relatively scheduled, uh, basis. You can see, uh, the hundred and seventy thousand is for a new payloader, that's probably the biggest ticket item on there, and then ninety-five thousand for a new backhoe. Other than that, it's pretty standard stuff, pickups and cold planers. A cold planer essentially allows us to grind up the asphalt and replace and patch that, so. And we have a roller, I think, in there as well, and then a new sweeper in, in, uh, twenty-three, and then a new jetter in twenty-four. If there's any questions, I can answer them, but I'll keep moving. Alright, construction projects, did I spell that right? We'll talk about the twenty projects, then we'll talk about the resurfing, restructuring, rehab, the road project, then we'll talk about seal coat, then some of the out-year projects, and then I've grouped all of the riverfront and tiger grant projects at the very end to, you know, to take a look at and have a conversation about. Uh, the first is the senior center roof, uh, there has been reports that the, the roof is leaking quite badly, and it's at, it's at the end of its life. The, the price that we've got for an estimate is seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, so, so the senior center is a little bit larger as a building goes than just what the seniors use. Um, as you can see, it, it goes all the way around here, but then it also wraps around the back. Um, and so there's actually a problem with the abutment of this building, so we have to, I don't know what we have to do there, I just know that I, that it's, it's costly, what we have to do along there, so. Seventy-eight thousand for that, uh, on there.
Sorry, should I ask you? So when you do that, are we, are we looking at doing similar to Public Works as far as like a white reflective service to help with heating and cooling?
Yep.
That type of thing, good, thanks.
And that one's funded out of local option sales tax?
Uh, the Roosevelt corridors, we talked about this most recently when we talked about the awarding of the grant. Uh, this is a project that'll happen, uh, in fiscal year twenty. Um, it was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in ICAP. I've actually also talked to the local engineer out of, out of, is it Fairfield or Tamla? Um, and there is some C step funding, and essentially, if you just write them a letter and request it, there's an opportunity for more funding. So I haven't heard back on that, so hopefully our bird, our, our dollar figure is lessened on that. I don't know that we'll get that funds, but we at least have the, the ICAP funding. Uh, the Brook Street Basin INI reduction, uh, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, this is, is this the storms, no, this, this is the storm sewer funds. Um, and this is, we've had flow meters in the system, uh, as a part of our sewer master plan, as to under, you know, to understand how much water is impacting our previously separated areas. When the flow meter was in there, they, we found out that this area has had twice the amount of water through INI, so it's inflow and infiltration. So our pipes are old enough, they're cracked, and they're allowing water from the, from the, when it rains, to get into the sanitary pipes, which it normally wouldn't be. So, uh, an INI and reduction, uh, project here. Sewer separation, uh, the Locust Basin, uh, is a project that we actually are making some headway on getting out to bid. As you remember, last January, we started the process of trying to go after CDGB funds. That process took six months to go after and finally receive that in June. Since then, uh, we've been kind of in this process with SRF, which is the state revolving fund, um, and then also the SHPO, State, statewide historic preservation office, uh, reviewing, uh, the environmental and archaeological impacts that this project will have, so it's taken its time to, to go through that review process. Uh, we sh- I think we have clearance here, we should be seeing a public hearing come forward in the next, well, we'll have several public hearings over the next month and a half, two months. Uh, but this project is ready to go. Uh, we have six hundred thousand, we did receive that in June of CDGB funds, um, and then the rest is SRF, uh, alone. Um, and, and a part of that loan, we also get, uh, ten percent, uh, to put toward, well, ten percent of the overall project cost, so five hundred and some thousand dollars towards green infrastructure that we're going to do, uh, around the Grimes School. The project cost was five point three, I don't know why in the CIP it had four point nine, but that's the overall project cost. I don't know if you need to take a look at that prior to, I noticed that as I was inserting it.
I think it had to do with just kind of estimating a timing between what might occur in one year and what the next.
The next. And so, a- as you know, uh, sewer separation is part of our consent order. Um, and I put this slide in here, it's not really a CIP item, but it's, it's something that's gonna greatly impact us in the future. As you notice, we have, you know, seven million dollars every other year for the future, moving forward. Um, right now, we are rap- well, we were wrapping up with the EPA on integrated planning until they decided to take a thirty-day vacation. We will, we will resume at some point. I, what's so bizarre about it is, is they're not even doing most of the work, they have a consultant, and the consultant just puts on the brakes even though they're at work every day. So I don't understand that, but anyway.
Consultant doesn't get paid during the thirty-five days.
They don't get paid during that time period, so they, um, that is, the integrated plan from the EPA is a framework, and they give you cookie cutter type information on how an integrated plan works. Well, to use that to help us go after renegotiation of our consent order isn't gonna work. So what we've done, and, and you saw that contract come through this fall, is hire, uh, an attorney who's very well versed in, in water law, you know, there's stormwater, credit trading systems within the state of Iowa, and then we've also hired a, an engineering consultant besides the one that did the design plans for Locust, to, to assist us in, in filling in the technical and local data for Burlington on the integrated plan. We've been working with them to try and, uh, put some things in there to, to help us renegotiate, so. What that means is, we don't want to go from their timetable of a consent order that says twenty twenty-five for separation, and then twenty twenty-eight for EQ basins. We've, we've had the conversations about how that's financially unattainable. Um, so, we, over the next five months, will put this together and then go back to the DNR. We've had correspondence in the last month that they are willing to, to also put the nutrient reduction strategy as a part of that conversation, so. I wanted to put this up here, you know, we're still working on it behind the scenes, we just don't talk about it a lot. Um, but hopefully, it allows us to, on a timetable that we dictate, um, move forward with projects that improve the sewer system, um, and also water quality at the same time. So what you'll see is some green infrastructure type projects, um, then you also see, you'll see some more traditional sewer separation type projects as well. But it, it's, we've also gotta be mindful of what we have in the system that's, you know, a hundred years old. We've gotta take care of some of the other parts, so, that's the reason why I put that on.
We're also, go, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if our sewer master plan plays a role in this at all?
Yes, there'll, there'll be information gathered from the sewer mast, it's alr- it's almost done-ish. Is that the right word?
We met with, uh,
H R Green.
H R Green on the sewer master plan last week, and, you know, part of what we wanted to look at, if, since I think about nineteen ninety-seven, our capital planning in the sewer area has all been towards sewer separation, and we have done limited to no maintenance or any other type projects since then. We had a couple of lift station projects that were done early two thousands, I think, if I look at that, what, what I've seen on data, and then
Since I've been here, we've done one lining job in the downtown area, and beyond that, everything else.
The sewer master plan is identi- is identified, lift station work that needs to be done. Uh, it still needs to get the EQ basins and some of the regulator chambers that we have, uh, needs to look at where our growth areas in the community, where our, at least to start looking at those INI areas that we could look to try to help improve the system. What are the plant expenditures that need to occur, not just the nutrient reduction strategy, but are, is there, what other work needs to be done now, down there to make sure that we're building that into our capital needs over the future? I guess the biggest project is the Mississippi Interceptor, and how do we, what do we do for taking a look at that line that, that comes down off of Harrison Street?
It goes off the bluff at Harrison Street, and go, actually goes, um, along the railroad tracks, kind of, at times underneath the river, um, and then comes back up at the wastewater treatment plant, and, and, uh,
And it's a line that's at end of life, and in terms of, from its, when it was constructed, it's, it, you would, you would call it at end of life. Um, we haven't had issues with it, but we know they're there, and
We've had, we've had some issues with it, but if we were to have catastrophic issues with that line, it would be in the millions to get, I, I almost say tens of millions to get that thing repaired, and so we, we need to look at getting that rerouted down Main Street in some fashion. I think the cost estimates on that
It's about twelve million.
I would say twelve to fifteen.
And that's, and plus there's some upsizing, I guess, on, well, that, I guess that did include the upsizing on the South Street, uh, lift station. But we wanna make sure that, as we talk about integrated plan and consent order, that we get the DNR to buy into the idea that we need to make some of these other system improvements, uh, just as, just, just as much as we need to hit the CSO order requirements.
And, and they'll make us accountable for the things that we say we're gonna do, but at least we have our own say, hopefully, in what we want, what we're able to get done, what we're able to afford to do.
We can prioritize it.
So, and, in regards to the master plan, we met with them last, last week, I think we're supposed to meet with them February twentieth, and that
Something like that.
That timeframe, to, we won't have a final plan at that point, but we need to get that final plan fairly soon after that to be able to real- realistically have enough data to go in and talk to the DNR about what's our order prioritization of projects, and are they willing to work with us on that?
Now, what did you say would cost ten to twelve if it blew?
Well, that's, I have no idea on how to estimate that, but
If it blew, I, we're not sure how much it would cost, but just going through an ordered process of replacing that line, that, they did an estimate in the, like in the twelve million dollar range for this Mississippi interceptor.
Sewer master plan.
That was the name.
Did it, did it take a look at that line and give us an estimated?
On kinda how to do it, it gave us a concept on how to re- to, how to redo it.
It was one
It involves, it involves some lift stations, so it would bring down the, the line dat- back to Main Street, sorry, I put my hand right on the microphone, go down Main Street, uh, to the north, and then it would have, it would involve lift stations at the, to the east of Main Street, and bring it back to Maine, and then it would bring it to, I think, the south lift station, and then bring it to wastewater treatment.
I understand that, uh, my question is, is it, does that plan look at the existing infrastructure and try to give us some amount of life expectancy left, so that we can try and plan for an expense that size? So we don't have a, an issue where it breaks, and we got water running into the river, and then now we're
It'd be a replacement of that line.
Yeah, it would at that point.
It would be a full replacement, just because the line is currently going over the bluff.
Yeah.
We, we asked for, I mean, what we got for recommendations at our, this first update with, was, uh, they've really looked at the consent order and the work along the Maslow, and we asked them to prioritize how, or at least some assistance in how do we prioritize which order of projects to do. I mean, the problem that we have is we know that we have, si- we have system-wide problems, and this is one that we know is a major issue that needs to be done, but we have fourteen lift stations that all have some, some varying degrees of issues. Some of them are, are, are at end of life as well, in terms of their current a- anticipated, uh, components. You know, you should, should start looking at doing some major upgrades. We've got bottlenecks in the system that need to be addressed. Each, each of those issues has, you can, I, I, there's several of them that you could put a realistic assumption that they should be addressed in the next five years, but we can't do all of them in the next five years.
We've always, we've always pushed for compliance with the consent order, and that has hindered us in getting those other types of things done.
In fact, I think, I think so much effort was put into hitting the CSO that order requirements, that we just could not get to the other stuff. So, I mean, everyone was a little overwhelmed as to, we, just how do we handle the CSO, there, there were no time or attention was given to the rest. I mean, it wasn't until two thousand twelve that we had even money set aside in the sewer budget for miss- like miscellaneous sewer hab repair, rehab repairs, um, where we could set aside three hundred thousand annually. That funding wa- did that, a downtown project, a lining, but it is, since then, it's basically been hit, addressing failures uh, in our system, where we've had line collapses. And it, it just speaks to, we had had, we went through such a long period of time where we weren't doing any systematic upgrades that it's, it's caught up to us, it started to catch up to us.
Uh, so, this is the resurface reconstruction and rehab. Uh, I wanted to talk about, this is, it's the, the GO bond funds that we portion out every year, this year is one point four. I think the following year will be one point six, and then the rest will be one point five million. I just wanted to talk about the projects, uh, they differ a little bit than what we had talked about in the five-year road plan. I know that's not that much time from when we had talked about it. Uh, Aspen and Dill was on, was on that list, uh, when we talked about it in October. We talked about it last night, you know, the one point seven, uh, one seven five million, uh, to do that reconstruction. The other project was actually Harrison Street, um, and I'll talk about that next. But the project that we've, we've selected, that was actually in next fiscal year's budget, uh, for the five-year road plan, was some of the areas up in North Hill. Um, with the, with the remaining amount, so what we, what I've shown here is the one point four million that we've budgeted for this year, coming out of this current fiscal year, we should have about an estimated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, of money that was left over. We, we took some funds from that GO to help, uh, cover the costs on Central Street, or Shren- Central Avenue Bridge, um, and then also agency on the east side, uh, there's a little bit of cost overruns there. So, what I'm showing here is, you know, one point seven five, or seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of, uh, of, of potential revenue. So that leaves five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to do H M A. It will not accomplish all of that if that, if the Aspen Dill project um is really at that budgeted amount. So what I'm hoping here is we can select down at least amount to get a good portion up in the North Hill area done. And if we, what we don't get done, we'll try and do the following year. So I put up the map of the, the, the roads that we're looking at based on P C I and, and ones that were on our uh five-year road plan. So we will probably have to part out some of it, you know, this hits on some of the concerns that the lady had the other night. I don't know which roads exactly, I think she said Iowa and and North Eighth, so North Eighth is actually on here. So um hopefully we can, we can get all of that and hopefully the project on Aspen Dill isn't bid out to that full amount.
Is Oak Street on there? I know you've talked about that in the past.
Um it is, it is not on there.
Didn't we pull Oak Street because, for Flint Hill Drive?
Correct. So the project that we had initially thought about for this current fiscal year was Harrison Street. Um as Jesse took a look at it, uh he thought that the best, so we have concrete with asphalt on top. Wanted to mill the asphalt off and do a crack and seat uh project, which involves you going through uh milling off the top, going in and breaking the, the concrete layer below and then rolling it. It helps get a, give a better base to the road system and then re-asphalting. A lot of what we're seeing in that area is reflective type cracking and then some alligator cracking coming from the outsides. As we dove into that, a lot of, what you see here is you see Harrison Street along the top. The yellow or orangish looking on this map, sewer lines are combined sewer system lines. Uh the blue are storm and then the green are sanitary. So what we thought about is, is could we make, integrated planning is involving all of your systems that you have and coming up with projects that don't just touch on one of them, but cover all of them. And so what we wanted to do is to try and use some road funds along with some separation type money to try and accomplish this project. Kill two birds with one stone sort of thing. So it isn't developed yet, we would still have to uh design it, but our thought is to take storm water and then uh put it in this drainage area that the school system owns. Uh it's fairly steep in some of those areas, I know that they're looking at potentially developing it, but I don't think we would touch any of the areas that they would be concerned about. So I don't know that, we don't have a, a deal worked out with the school yet on that, but I think that uh it's definitely a possibility. It's something we would look forward to doing um in the next fiscal year. Uh Seal Coat, you can't really see that in this light, can you?
The worst part is, is that if you look on the presentation slides, it
You can't see it either?
Perfect.
It looks perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that.
The yellow does not work though.
So, so what I can describe to you for the Seal Coat roads is we have four hundred thousand dollars budgeted. So what we try and do is we, we, we plan a project around that three fifty range to cover the engineering costs, that's part of that, but also help cover some of the overruns. So I guess I'll try and describe it to you. LaWise Street uh from Maine to South Seventh-ish, I don't know. And then from uh Madison on to South Fourteenth. Um we have South Fourteenth on there, um some sections of Barrett. This really doesn't, I, I don't know the roads well enough to be able to tell you what I'm describing. But I have a map up here of the Seal Coat roads that we're gonna try and get at.
Sure.
So um Broadway uh extension is a, is actually part of the Rise project out at the uh the Flint Hit Ridge Business Park. It's uh estimated at one point four five million. Uh it's a part of the Rise grant, so it's four hundred and eighteen thousand worth of state dollars to do that. The rest is covered um through tax increment financing uh to pay for that. And we actually have that project uh being designed, should be designed in the next week or so and then go to Rise for approval and go out to bid. This is a fiscal year twenty-one project. We call it the floating manhole, if you can see right over here, we have our, one of our engineering techs. Uh this is a manhole, right, all, I don't know how tall it is, fifteen foot? That's not good. And so where it's located is, is right along the railroad tracks in the Hawkeye Sewer. Well, this project would reroute and redo that whole manhole area. Um this project is of a high priority to us because of the, the large liability that it creates. You know, if we were to have something break in that area, the Hawkeye Hole would seem like nothing compared to what this is because it's sanitary and, and we would have major environmental issues. This is a very complicated project because of the terrain. Um I, I think he's got contours on that map for me, but you, you can't really understand what that means. It's pretty steep in that area, go ahead.
What's the Hawkeye Hole?
That big hole we have sent by the auditorium.
So was that built like that originally or is it just?
It's wore out over the years.
Okay.
There's a wall that.
So it's silted out, it was probably, it wasn't as deep at one point.
Yeah, to describe it, there are some storm lines that come through here and there's like a wall and it's eddied around and it's basically washed away uh all the, the, the dirt that was around it. And so it's kinda just floating, so if it were to break open, you'd have sanitary sewer water flowing down the Hawkeye Creek.
Let's get that fixed.
So. It'll, it'll take a while to get through the permitting um and through B N S F approvals. In all honesty, I don't know how you're gonna, we're gonna have to get easements to get equipment down in there. It may inwa, involve, you know, reworking the hillside to even get equipment down there.
What's the estimated, four sixty?
Four sixty-eight and that's a
That's cheap, man.
It's difficult, it's difficult and we don't know how to ballpark it, so it could be, I mean, it could be more than that. But it's just, it seems outlandish, but the liability of that is much more than that.
Yeah, get that fixed.
You have that set to be paid for out of sewer.
Sewer funds, sorry, I didn't talk about that.
Wow, man.
Uh Washington Street, um in the original budgeted project that we applied for S T P money at the time was a, was a one million dollar asphalt overlay from front to the bridge deck at uh Central. We have eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand in S T P funds available. Um as we've talked through the, 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 the rework of downtown with the Tiger Grant and the Riverfront, uh we think that it behooves us to, to do a better project than just an asphalt overlay. For one, we have some brick along Washington Street in some areas. And so what this two point one million dollar estimate uh includes is some full-depth reconstruction in areas along with some green infrastructure type work. So to, to hopefully match what we're doing on Jefferson and Main Street.
Can we use Tiger money for any of that?
We've had that conversation, should we have Tiger money left over? They said that it's possible, but I wouldn't bank on it.
They didn't say to count on it.
That's.
They said theoretically, it's, it's, it's not what they wanna do. But if we were to see the Main Street, if, if we accomplish the work that we've identified on Main Street and Jefferson Street and it's less than what was allocated for that, they, they might be open to a discussion. That's why the, the match on this is out of T I F funds. Um and it makes sense, one of the byproducts of this, as, as he mentions, green infrastructure, is we go to talk to DNR and try to push them off on longer timeframe. These are the kinds of things that we have to do to say that we're, we're, why, what we're doing in its place.
So, so I can give you, this project along with the Tiger Grant projects, because we plan on incorporating green infrastructure, are mentioned in our C I P list of our integrated planning to, to show the DNR that while it may not be our direct funds, this project would be. We are spending money on improving water quality and, you know, we're, we're spending money towards our systems. So, I mean, that's the idea of it. Uh Division in West Burlington uh roundabout. This project is a T I F funded project. However, there is the possibility of going after I cap funds, the same funds that we went after for the uh Roosevelt corridor, but also T S I P, T S I P is capped at five hundred thousand. Those are the same funds that we're using for Agency East to, to put the center turn lane and redo the traffic lights. So there is a possibility going after some grant funds rather than using this.
Multiple grant funds?
Um if you're doing, you'd probably just go after one.
Alright, alright. So, but didn't we just put some infrastructure improvements into this intersection like two years ago?
Uh it's been longer than that. It was before I got here.
It's quickly become one of the busier intersections in town.
On a, on a, on a noon hour type day, that traffic is backed up for, for quite some distance.
When we did the, when we originally did the infrastructure down the other roundabout, our goal really, the, our preferred location was here, uh that, what's he, he's identified on this for the next project. Uh we could not, and we couldn't get it accomplished. We needed to tie it in with how Silgan's truck traffic was gonna go and um we had, we would have, from our perspective, we would have liked to see them routing around, coming in on Division Street and going out on Division Street, so it would have justified uh that roundabout location.
And if I remember correctly.
They wanted to come in on West.
The roundabout cost, that cost is significantly less than the one
Correct.
West Avenue, why is that?
Slip lane, there's a lot of it, there's a lot more concrete involved than that. I, you know, we, when we did this pro, when we looked at this project from staff level, I had Jesse work up an estimate. This is actually last year we worked up this project, was to put in traffic lights. Traffic lights seem relatively cost, you know, you know, fruit not cheap. But, you know, those things costs, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, I think the estimate on this was three fifty to four hundred. Plus it's an ongoing cost that you have, you know, I'm, I don't think roundabouts are the answer to every intersection just because, just because they have a large, you know, a large real estate and there's a lot of, you know, concrete that goes down for that. But I think in certain intersections like this one, they, they're very, fairly cost effective. So I think that this one makes a lot of sense and I think we should go after some grant funds for it.
Do we have any members of the public who would, that, would like this over a, having traffic signals there?
I think could convert it a few, quite a few people on the roundabouts.
I would agree.
I think when you educate them that the accidents are, are less, the chiefs love it, they have to be called out less, less the ambulance calls, it's a good thing.
Yeah, our last project, I think, did go over pretty well.
I think so too.
I think it at least covered some of the fears that were, were put out there, you know. Yes, the roundabout for there was almost nearing a million dollars. But the thing that wasn't talked about is, is what, what would have happened, had to happen to replace those traffic lights and rework that from a, you know, the concrete perspective in the intersection. It was gonna be four fifty in that range to redo that work. So it wasn't, you know, yes, you're talking about half the cost, but traffic lights, you know, even though they're L E D, still come with quite a bit of cost, you know, the programming has to be updated on a regular basis.
Wiring goes bad.
And so the last, I, all I did was I used the snippet tool and took it out of the, the uh, the summary list, but I grouped all the Riverfront and Tiger Grant projects, kinda as one lump sum to talk about. Uh we've, we've discussed the four point two million dollars for the flood wall work. Uh we just approved the E S A to start the engineering services on that. Uh the two hundred thousand is for the boating infrastructure grant and I think Jim talked about that here a couple nights ago. Um the, the projects, as you can see for Tiger, are broken out in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three uh per our current Tiger Grant agreement with the federal highway, which has not approved yet. Uh that's the timeframe that we see those projects occurring. So it would be Main Street and then Jefferson Street and then here for the Tiger Grant for the uh, for the Riverfront side, that would happen at the, kinda at the same time. So there's a lot of factors that go into those timings of that. Um you know, there's N I P A processes, the D O T's got bidding processes, so um we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of things that could shift around over the next couple of years for that. And then the great places, I put that in there, I didn't really know what to talk about other than that's the grant re-received and it'll probably get designed and, and installed at a similar timeframe that we're redoing a lot of stuff at the Riverfront.
Well, I think that is, kind, we kinda talked about this a little bit last night. As we deal with the Tiger Grant and the, some of the thing, aspects that were put into that, the great places is the, the shade structures, the amphitheater, the uh fountain or whatever, splash pad, that's it. Whatever you call it. Um all of those things are gonna have to in, mesh together and there, so that those discussions will, will these projects are just gonna have to go in and, and be done pretty much at the same time or at least have one grand scheme that, that puts them all and shows how they all lay out together.
And so for context of what money is what, uh the Tiger Grants, uh it comes up to a nineteen point two million dollars. Uh of that, it's seventeen million dollars is ours, uh and then the rest of it's, isn't it, is it nineteen million? Does that add up to only seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're a, I, I'm not sure what you have on for the
Because that's.
The Tiger on the, that.
Did you combine the boating infrastructure monies on that?
It, some of it might have.
Two point three down there, but.
Some of it might have been. The Tiger enc- encapsulates part of the um boating infrastructure. And then you have a separate boating infrastructure grant that has to cover the rest and then we have actually a ma, a cash match on a portion to, to make sure that we don't violate the terms of the, the Fish and Wildlife Service and what they wanna see. I am not sure, off the top of my head, why.
It doesn't add up to the seventeen million, is my.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why that.
The point I was trying to make is, is the Tiger Grant, the seventeen million dollars, that's all grants.
Some of your expenditure might have been double counted into, into two separate projects on that. I'm, I'm just not sure without going back and looking at this point.
That's something we need to take a look at, probably.
But between them, what I can say, you have the Tiger Grants, two separate street projects and then I, I really think that the, the one for the, the lower one down there, that six point two is supposed to be a lower figure. It in, it encapsulates the idea of doing the crossings, railroad crossings, which are grant funded.
Correct.
So that's, that's part of what is, is changing that, that dollar amount and I think it might also.
That's what makes up the nineteen million dollars talked about in the Tiger Grant application.
It's not our fund, Phil.
No, it's.
And if we don't get that funding, then we prob, then that portion of the project will most likely go away. Will, will go away, we don't have the requirement to.
That is the end of my presentation and I would have made it underneath an hour. Just an item of note, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Questions, council?
No, I got all mine answered during the hour. I bet they over.
What a jerk, man.
But I will give you the under, because if Jim hadn't have cut in every twenty seconds, you would have been there.
To be fair, I needed him on a couple of those conversations.
That's true.
You know, the Tiger Grant is one of those things where I don't know.
What did the media table say, over or under?
She said over.
She's over, she's, she's been through this before.
I've been here too long.
Good job, thank you, sir.
She knows the deal.
But for that record, she did set the over/under, so I wanna make clear that.
House always wins, right?
Alrighty.
Did.
Linda, these are all in my wheelhouse right now, that's a problem. All, all in my wheelhouse.
James, praise.
You have several other sheets that are at your spot. Uh we never, this comes up, every year we have sections of the budget that don't have their own um night to be presented. Uh there's a lot of general fund um sheets that were at your spot for tonight. See if I can go down to, what type of expenses does the general fund pay for, besides the ones that Nick covered? How does city divide up the general fund? Within general government, you have, that's, he, Nick didn't cover that, in case you didn't notice that. Um but you do have the sheets for that at your, at your spot. Uh executive administration, I don't, I hate thinking of myself executive, but that's where, where I'm, my, my budget and then part of K D's salary uh go in there. You have the line item sheets in there and it's an increase of ten thousand dollars from the previous year, which is pretty much all um personnel costs. There's a little bit of increase in some of the dues. But if you were to look through the budgets that you have, the two, there's ver, there's limited changes that occur from year to year. One of them though is in your budget, the, the city council. There's a significant increase in here from last year's budget to the cur, to the proposed budget for twenty. It's not an actual increase of expenditures, but it is a change in where we're showing the expenditure. Uh we've paid uh twenty thousand dollars of dues to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Council for the, their, what they do for us as a community. We've been paying for that out of road use tax and there is some reason to justify paying for it in road use tax 'cause they do help with uh the street, street projects, but they do an awful lot of general government. 'cause they do help with uh, the street, street projects, but they do an awful lot of general government work, and a better location for that expenditure is in the general fund than, rather than road use tax, and so it's something that we've never, haven't corrected in the past, but this year we are getting it over here into the, the general fund budget, it's a, which, which category it goes into, it makes sense that it goes into administration, uh, you guys are the lottery winner so on it, um, for, just to find which administrative category to throw it into, but they do help, if you think about it, they do help a lot with policy on a, on a overall basis, and it does make sense that this, this is kind of an overall policy area for it to go into.
What, what are the, what's the reason for the personnel increase?
On what?
On the city council, same sheet.
I'm not even sure, let's see.
Yeah.
I think that the only thing that, it, you, you all, your actual, what you get for a monthly meeting doesn't change, but some, different, each year there's a little bit, a little bit of variation on who's on getting covered from IPRs or Social Security and what the, what the amounts are gonna be, and it's uh, we're, it's, that's a little bit higher than what's been in the past. Uh, personnel services, there's no change in your staffing there, um, and you have the sheets on that, I, I think that you have, personnel has two part-time positions that are shown, shown in it, uh, that's a half, halftime person? And then the courier is at point three, uh, to, to take stuff from building to building, uh, we, and you have then the person, I can't remember your other, what's that? Oh, that's in HR. Yeah, you have a part-time person that's in there. Um, Stephanie, even though she's over HR, is not budgeted in this area, is that correct? You're down in finance administration, uh, legal services is a, we don't have um any change from the previous year. If you notice and look back, we had a spike, uh, a cup, back in two thousand sixteen, that was when we did labor contracts, and we won't have another spike occur until we get to uh negotiating again, which would be probably twenty-one. Uh, we'll start to see that expenditure, city clerk is really the changes that you're seeing there are personnel related. Uh, finance for just base contract and, or increases in existing personnel costs, we're not adding any staffs. Uh, finance administration doesn't add any staff, um, accounting likewise, no additional staff, computer operations stays at the existing staff level, uh, we do um transfer uh, from local option sales tax, a hundred forty thousand dollars into this budget to cover our IT purchases uh, within the system, and, and they come out and, and are expensed here. Uh, risk management is property and casualty insurance, um, we have a amount, we, we're able to collect revenues or property tax to cover at least a portion of this, um, but regardless, it is an expenditure that, that we cover, we show in the general fund, uh, for an, any property and casualty expenses associated with general fund, um, or just a catch-all, the, those expenditures that are associated with sewer are allocated to sewer. What other funds get allocated out to their specific areas, Stephanie? Are there any? For insurance? So road use tax is gonna see their portion, each of the different funds has a portion within the, their line item budgets. Um, there is a pretty good size increase in there, uh, it has to, it really, we saw about a twelve percent increase from um last year's expenditure, the problem that we have with budgeting for this, we get our bill about January fifteen. The bill we, so this year's bill, we had a fi- a twelve percent increase from last year, uh, we're budgeting what would effectively be about an eight percent increase going into next year. And I hate showing these, if you show here, what I do like, that you have the ability, if you highlight in a given area, um, you can see the increase or, that, or the, this number, you can go and look at the number that was back in the previ- the current year. The problem you run into is the change amount there, all of those change amounts are a change from what we spent so far this year, and I don't know if there's a way to change how that is shown on or calculated or not, but it's, it's not, it's, it becomes hard to compare one budget cycle to the, the other for folks who are looking on open gov. Um, the last category that's in there, city hall maintenance, this is the only spot where we actually have a, a line item purchase that's going on, it's any change from the pre- from the current year, uh, we've budgeted in here, I think sixty-five hundred for a replacement of a copy machine. Um, that puts it five to, I think either five or six years um since the last replacement that occurred. And again, we've never spent a lot of time talking about these, we, we have no changes in our personnel structure, the ma- majority of any changes that you're seeing in, in dollar amounts from the current budget year to the next year are reflective of changes in pay and benefits outside of the items that I mentioned in terms of changing over where we're coding Southeast Iowa's bill and then doing that copy machine purchase. Um, you do have budget sheets also um at your spot for the bridge fund, the bridge run itself is of, I think it's budgeted in the fifteen thousand dollar range maybe overall, and you have line items out there for TIF and um then our, what, rebates? For tar- targeted jobs, um, within the TIF, you're, it's really reflective of the, the information that Travis went over last night, where it's just put into the budget forms, the majority of our TIF funds go through our consolidated TIF, uh, which is just a catch-all for all the revenues that come in, uh, we have three sep- three separate rebate projects going on right now. Um, one's grow, grow, grow greater Burlington for the spec building that was, we provided a rebate for them, uh, to get that sale accomplished. Uh, the Manor site has a rebate payment that goes on with it, and then um Wine Guard project for the Fairway Center. Were there any others that are in that? Um, the other area that we have individual sheets in there for are the targeted jobs, uh, as we've done different agreements with uh employers over first, uh, as a, we're, we're acting as a pass-through on those, and I don't, I'm not looking at these sheets and I'm doing this off the top of my head, 'cause I don't re- really see this on a day-to-day basis. We finished up the federal mogul this year, so that's one that has been in here in previous years, and we're no longer showing that. But we have projects in here for Wine Guard, who else, Stephanie? CNH, Silgan, and any others? So those are the main ones, um, again, when they've gone through the process over, those are projects that have been done over the last eight, seven years or so, uh, where, and really we've relied on a lot of work from the partnership to make this occur, as they've done um expansions, or in the case of Silgan, the, a new company coming into town, they've gotten credit for creating jobs at certain wage thresholds, they have to um work with us to show that they have met their job creation requirements, their payrolls come through us, get submitted to the state, and some of them are done on a monthly basis, some of them uh are done on a semi-annual or less frequent basis uh, for doing the reimbursements, and we, we really have some estimates in here on, on them, because we, there's not a lot of consistency from, from what we see from the companies, some of them are very consistent and do monthly reports, but others, we don't know when we're gonna see something, uh, and I'd say probably the, the one that has caused the most variability has been Case, and that really is reflective, when they did their, their project back in two thousand thirteen-ish uh for job creation, they uh did very well on creating positions, but they had, they then hit a tough economy for them, and uh they went into a phase where they were receiving no payments, and then have gotten back to where they've been able to get some, so with, as they've put, brought some of those jobs back on, but we do estimates here, we know what their flow-throughs are not uh allocations that hit our, our uh che- our, our basic checkbook, uh, but we have to try to make sure that we at least give an estimate that helps to keep us from um not showing an expense on our books. Uh, so Stephanie, as she puts these numbers in here, is really just trying to make an estimate of what have we seen uh this, the current year, and what do we kinda hope, kind of guess that we're gonna see next year, and put in a number that is high enough to account for that flow of dollars coming from the state to us, and then going out to the individual companies.
Jim, can you highlight the Potter's Field expense? I know it's not a large one.
The which one?
Potter's Field.
Oh, we have not actually, we've budgeted in here multiple years uh for this, and they do not actually, since I've been here, they haven't requested it, but it, they have the right to be requesting that twenty-five, what is it, twenty-five hundred?
Uh, one thousand fifty.
Yeah, thousand fifty, so we know that's something that, that is potentially one that they could request of us, um, they just have not done it, but we wanna make sure that we at least cover it in case it does happen.
Well, don't say too loud things.
You shouldn't have asked me. Um, and there was a small increase in, as you mentioned, that Human Rights Commission that, that you have on the list of your things there, it's not a large dollar amount, that's for out-of-pocket expenditures and some promotions that they do with different events, and I think that was maybe a fifty, twenty-five dollar increase, wasn't it? And I don't know if I skipped over any of the categories, I know I didn't really go into detail on them, but there aren't, we don't have changes that are occurring with them. Um, one that you did have in there too is the airport, uh, a reminder for you, the, what we have in the airport, we, we have an allo- we have a property tax collection that we do for the airport authority, uh, we levy the same amount every year, and I think that might be within the, the terms of twenty eighty to, to put that pro- prorated share uh or contribution to them. Uh, the dollars that come in from that property tax levy that we then turn over to the airport authority, we also have a little bit of additional uh property ca- property and casualty expense that's allocated into that line item that we cover on our own.
Can you, can you remind me which, which um companies are benefiting from the targeted jobs?
Silgan, CNH, Wine Guard, and who else did you say? She- I don't know if Shears has received a payment yet, they, they have a, a project that's in there that could potentially occur, but, and there was one other one, wasn't there?
It was G.
Dorn, Dorn and Ward was one that we did an application on, but never did anything, and I can't remember, we might have, we might end up having one on the project down here for a
Frank Miller?
Yeah.
Frank Miller, yeah. Sorry.
So, I mean, we, we're doing guesses, we, the, but, did I hit all of them that were?
Is it all?
Yeah, pull up our website, there's a schedule out there.
We're at on here? Cylinder departments, finance? Under the agreements? Oh, where am I going?
Is it the non, no.
You asked me to. Thanks.
Want me to come help you, Jim?
I need a lot of help. You sure?
Yeah, without the left tax increment. Oh, those are everything, yeah, targeted jobs I don't have out there, we just, they're just a pass through, but.
Okay.
Like here's where all the TIF rebate agreements are.
So as we did talk about the TIF rebates, the three that are existing are here, and you can see the terms that are on here, uh, they all have different terms.
Nice. Did we just start doing that this year?
We, yeah. We, we started doing, yeah, we started doing this, we had a discussion about looking at what other communities are put out on their agreements, and this was one that made sense based off of what we've seen for other places to try to get some of this information out.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think that's it for what I wanted to cover out of that.
You wanna put that sheet up, Bill?
I wanna look at my spreadsheet to see if I missed one. We had a discussion last night about hotel motel tax usage, so I wanted to kinda break down how we are using that, and yeah, this is a, I will go back to the rebate agreements, or the targeted jobs, the ones that we've had actual money flow through so far, CNH, Wine Guard, Federal Mogul, Shears has had money flow through it, and Silgan. There's others that will potentially happen, but we have a budget for them, 'cause we don't even know what the dollar amounts are gonna be, we, whatever, that's the term of the agreement they've done with the state, so we tried, we just try to get an estimate that hits what they're at. So anyway, with what Eric has put up here, um, we're budgeting for revenues this year, eight hundred and ten thousand, and there's kinda four different categories for how we use hotel motel funds, one would be contractual agreements that were kind of locked into providing funding based off of, uh, that would be the Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, and then with the, the Bees Association. I'd mentioned last night that we also provide fifty thousand dollars for capital annually, but that's out of local option sales tax, so sorry to confuse you, we, it's out of the different funding pot.
To the Bees?
To the Bees, uh, what we do provide though is we cover basically the utilities out there at that fifty thousand. Um, operational support, the second category, uh, we set aside annually the twenty-seven thousand for capital equipment, the current item that I know that we're looking at, and I don't know where we've gotten with doing some table replacement down there. It might have already been made, the items that, the, the biggest item that I know, or biggest two items that I know that need to be done down there, uh, the HVAC system and uh a backup generator that's large enough to, to handle that. Those are both projects that um are well above the twenty-seven thousand annually, and they're gonna require uh some funds to get set aside to make them happen, the one that's probably the largest concern is the HVAC system. Uh, we know that whenever, that's, that's gonna go at some point, there's components on there that just, that aren't in production anymore. Anyway, so we have to put aside for capital equipment for the auditorium, we uh. We, uh, cover riverfront maintenance. We transfer annually into the general fund. This fifty-two thousand to cover, uh, the cost of mowing et cetera along the riverfront. Take care of those, the, the park area through there. It doesn't cover all of our costs, but it covers a portion of it. Replex operations and hotel mo- or, I'm sorry, replex operations and golf course that we talked about, uh, last night. And then we have a, a, a transfer of funds that goes over essentially to the general fund to cover base operations. Things that it is allocating towards are the comit- commitments we have towards operating a pool, towards operation, uh, operating the recreational programs, uh, the summer rec program or just park maintenance in general. Uh, and our auditorium costs. It comes nowhere near covering all of our costs, but it helps to subsidize what we put towards those items. Any cut in any of those will be a direct impact on our general fund operating budget and will require some sort of an offset of expenditure in, in the general fund to make it whole. Capital equipment, really these are all, well, I guess almost all Eric, as he presented in the budget for those to, the rec plex and the golf course last night. The final one being, the, the ma- the significant item being, uh, starting to do the design work on the boat, boat dock. And then you see the other functions or outside entities that we fund. These are things that are a little, that don't impact day-to-day operations the same way. Funding for the art guild, I don't know how long that's been in place, but we've been given, providing twelve thousand, two fifty to them as well as the one in there for symphony, the three thousand. That's been done since before I was here. We added, we did a, with the band, um, you know, the band used to be something that was funded out of the general fund. Probably cut, well, it is, before I was here, I'm gonna just estimate it's around two thousand eight. That, that that quit being funded. Was it later than that? Two thousand ten? Okay, so even, maybe even two thousand eleven. At, after that, uh, they came in and we provided funding in two thousand fifteen, three thousand, as a one-time deal. And then last year, two thousand eighteen, we funded them again and they're, they've been on our books as an ongoing three thousand since then. Renewable energy, they're, they are the only committee within the ci- the city that has an allocation of funds to, uh, to figure out how to use, make recommendations to the council on how to use. And they've, they have made recommendations and, um, that the council has acted on over, over time. But that is one that, that, that would probably be the one that is most out of, it doesn't impact general, general fund operations and it's kinda a standalone item. You see on the bridge fun, bridge run, um, we, uh, the six thousand dollars there, when, the way the bridge run oper- operates, they, uh, collect registration fees. They also go after sponsorships. Uh, they use the funds from the registration fees and the sponsorships to cover all the costs of, of the event. You were able to add some additional things to the event last year, but you also had sponsorship fee, or, yeah, sponsorship fees to, uh, help accomplish that. I don't know that, you, I don't think you'd probably have done it without, without those sponsorship fees. The bridge run this year, the six thousand that's in here is designed to be a match from the profits from that. So when you, when you sign up for the bridge run, you, uh, identify, or you're shown on there, it used to be you were identifying three separate projects. And how is, how are you doing that now, Eric?
Now, we're trying to promote a project upfront and then have those funds go to it that it impacts and there's no real purpose, and a lot of the races that you see in the parks are for something. And ours was just kind of a select and didn't really build that support. So we're trying to upfront identify a project that can build support. And, uh, part of it is like a small playground that normally we wouldn't be able to fund through the CIP just 'cause we've had so many cuts and that's kind of been our goal to identify a project that we can build support for families and individuals to come out and go to our run and that's what you're supporting. And, uh, so that, that would enables us to actually accomplish something with the run, not just put on the run, but have an end project that we can complete.
So as we talk about the bridge run, the net proceeds, the, the net profit from that event is line item to go to the identified project, this, this year being a park improvement. Part of what you talk about is using that bridge run, or this six thousand dollars out of hotel motel as a, as a dollar match to that. So when people are signing up, they, they know that not only is the net profits, but we're committed to do a dollar, a dollar-for-dollar match up to that six thousand dollar cap towards that special project. So a cut to the bridge run funds is a cut to a, a, essentially a CIP, a hidden CIP project in the parks. So it's, it, to me,
Why are you looking at me, James?
Based off of discussions, what I want you to know is that a cut there is really similar to making a cut to your capital equipment projects up above.
I like the idea of having a targeted project and I think if you could actually have a picture of that, what you envision and put that in the brochure, I think that would be beneficial. People like to know what they're, they're running for, what they're doing that hard work for.
Can you get all of us a copy of that sheet, please, James?
Yep, I can print it out when we go downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's just do, well, let's just get down bare bones on Thursday.
Okay. So, but I did wanna make sure you had that. Any other questions off of?
Well, I guess the, it's gonna sound like I'm picking on renewable energy, but.
Let's just wait till Thursday to pick on them, John.
Well, no, I just, I don't understand, I guess, not real sure where they have a budget. None, none of the other committees have a budget. So does that money accrue year after year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but you think about, and so what is, what it, this is part of the prioritization you have to have as a, as a council. That has been how you have gotten some of the charging stations in the community. It's how, I mean, the two projec- that's one of the main projects that I would point to. The other is Eric's department. You wouldn't, you were operating off of a co- some
Old police vehicles that run their course and
That were in pretty low shape. And, and part of it, they were one of the lower-end spectrum of vehicle replacements. So, uh, those, those vehicles were high maintenance costs and we were able to go through the lease purchase on two, two vehicles down there with some, some seed funds from them that kept the purchase price within what your operating costs were for those vehicles prior to that.
But they certainly contributed to make it happen.
They have also installed the solar panels on top of the port. And then actually, I think to this week, they're installing a soft start on our compressor at Public Works.
That's correct.
So they cover those types of costs.
And I'd, I'd also say they have, not always is it the dollar projects that they're doing. They have been really instrumental and as we've had other projects throughout the city for trying to do, uh, energy efficiency projects.
The cars.
They have really pushed and gotten us to do things that we wouldn't have otherwise done. Now, they can do those without the, the funds, but it also is some
I don't appreciate it.
I think the most recent one they're doing, working on is the, the uplighting at the welcome sign right off Bluff Road and
And that's one they do recommend using some of their funds that they've set aside.
That one's actually probably gonna happen here shortly.
Yeah.
Well, once it warms up.
Is there, what is their fund? I mean, what is their balance?
No, no, let's do it, yeah. Yeah, let's, let's do this Thursday.
No, you can get an answer on this.
That Annette went over last night. They have a line item on capital projects. Um, it's seventy-four-ten. Their balance, December thirty-first was twenty-one thousand, five seventy-six. So every month you can go in and see, you'll see this month I made the five thousand dollar transfer. They haven't spent any money this fiscal year.
Making an adjustment to this year's budget won't affect that number, correct?
Well, I already transferred the money for it, right.
So when you had asked where, where you could make a transfer the other night, the first thing I said is renewable energy, 'cause
I thought we were gonna talk about this on Thursday, James.
It is the one, it is the outlier for what we do.
You need a haircut.
You can talk to my barber about that.
So, anything else for tonight, James?
Not unless you had some, is there a direction of anything that you wanted prepped for Thursday night?
I don't, I think
I know we'll talk about this.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty good for, for Thursday night. As long as we've all got a copy of that. Does anybody else need anything else?
Is there anything else throughout the course of the meetings that we wanna run back over or change? I, I can't think of anything.
I can't think of anything. I, I just need that sheet and, uh, we'll just have some fun on Thursday.
Okay.
We good? Okay. Good night, everybody. We'll see you on Thursday.
What time did I say that we'd be done?